This commission special meeting to order, the date is January twenty second, twenty twenty five is approximately eight forty one. With that, um, now only if you would please do a vote call for us.
Commissioner Lisa DeVigio?
Present.
Commissioner Warren Waring?
Here.
Commissioner Linda Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Cindy Burton?
Here.
Mayor Joe Myers?
I'm here.
The resource director Sheila Walker?
Here.
I'll show you all right now and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Warren, if you think it's an indication, please stand here.
Thanks, Father. Thank you once again for you woke us up this morning and you watched over us all night. It kept us safe from all of our harm and danger, seeing us, taking them in. We ask that you bless us all today. Help us today to make the right decisions. And Father, we ask that you continue to bless us and keep us in this arm. All these prayers that we do ask in the name of Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for coming out this morning in this treacherous weather. Um, we have the blizzard, I know and I've been getting that, like I said, we all live within a few blocks and we could have walked if we needed to. Um, welcome Mr. Flowers. Um, we had a little bit of a hiccup this morning. Um, Don Holmes, who was supposed to be with us. Um, it was a holiday week and so he's, he's a day behind unfortunately. So he's thinking that today is Tuesday and not, and not Wednesday. That happens to the best of us. Happened to me. Um, with that said, he has asked if we can give him probably about a thirty minute um opportunity and he will zoom in with us. Otherwise, it would be about an hour and a half and he'd have to drop it from the back of his hand. So commissioners, um, we can recess this meeting for about thirty minutes if, if so, if everyone so pleases. Um, it's your will. Um, that's fine with me. Does it suit Mr. Flowers? How does that not work with your schedule, Mr. Flowers?
Well, we're uh, I connect that happening. We uh, we have about four inches of uh ice and snow. But uh, um, I mean, we got contact with uh officers on the red and we got everything. Everybody, everybody's meeting at the moment. We have no major issues. So I'm good and uh.
We were just zooming back in. Um, so in about thirty, thirty minutes, we give you a head, a heads up. Can we use the same link now? Do you know?
No, I have to resign.
Okay, okay. So we'll send you one, have to send Don one as well so that Don can um zoom in. They have, um, my understanding is uh, Mr. Flowers and Mr. Holmes have, have been talking. Um, we won't have the actual contract in front of us, but we do have a former contract in front of us that we can talk about. And um, and it's just really the terms of what we're trying to agree to today. So if everyone is in agreement with that, is everyone in agreement?
Yes.
Commissioner Pita?
Just before we break, since we're gonna be later than we thought, um, I had a couple of issues that I was hoping we could um discuss before we left today. And one of those would be um, a letter of thanks to Pastor Shaw and anybody else.
I was planning to do that.
Okay, could that on behalf of the commission?
Yeah.
Um, and as well, you know, should we consider um reimbursing?
And I have thanked him every time.
I'm sure.
If it all stood in line about a first commission, I'm.
Um, I mean, I just.
Have it on my list. I just have it. So thank you for bringing your attention.
I was just gonna make a motion so we could all, you know, say that. And also, should we consider um reimbursing the church for the cost of the gasoline? Um, and I'll just.
I'll, I'll ask anything. Yeah. I'll ask you. Yeah.
Right. And then um, also, I don't know, um, do we have, would this be a good time at the end of this meeting to talk about some dates or the Blue Ribbon Commission um presentation to us? Cause we, did we say we have a special meeting for that? That's really Commissioner Warren's issue, but I just wondered if this would be an opportunity.
Well, we've got several things that we need to put on the schedule. Um, so I think at the end, we probably might bring Michael in. Um, at the end of the meeting instead of talking about some dates. And I know we have the golf cart we put on hold, we put several things on hold. But like the um, our carts we put down on hold, we have to have discussion on that. And you feel the Blue Ribbon is going to need a special meeting and outside very large mission meeting.
Yes, for the presentation.
Well, I think.
Maybe we can talk about it. And we're also, the school board is scheduled a special meeting as well. So we need to have it before March. For next month.
Next month. Okay. So just um, I know that's not the primary work of the day, but why are they? What can I ask why they're scheduling a special meeting since we haven't, it hasn't been brought to us for any decision making or direction?
They're, they're just, they asked for a date with the school board. And so we, they're gonna come here first.
Okay.
Just have to go try and set it up at the house.
Okay. Just make sure. With that, um, if everybody's good with that, then we can um briefly. Do you wanna make a motion about the letter? That's fine.
Oh, okay. You wanna do that now? Um, I move that um, a letter be sent on behalf of the entire city commission um, to Pastor Shaw, that first got to search Crescent City, thanking him for uh everything he did to provide the um tour for the city manager um. Okay.
A second.
Motion in a second. On favor, please say aye.
Uh, aye.
Aye. I understand. Okay. Okay, with that, I'm gonna recess this meeting until let's say nine fifteen. Is that work? There is coffee in the um, in the break room. Um, then out there, I think Dunkin' and Break Room.
Yeah, nine fifteen. Uh, wait.
Wait.
We're going to re- we're going to reconvene our special commission meeting and we now have with us our city attorney, Don Holmes. Don, thank you for joining us on this cold, on this cold day.
Thank you for, thank you for cooperating by attempting to get all the movement by mistake at this scheduling. But anyway, I'm here.
That's okay. That's okay. Turning everybody off that we've had a holiday this, um, this week. Okay, so with that, today we are here, um, as we all know that we're trying to get through this city manager employment agreement with Mr. Flowers. Um, I believe, Mr. Holmes, you have been in discussion with Mr. Flowers. Do you want to just kind of brief us where we are?
Um, sure. I mean, I can. Uh, Mr. Flowers had, uh, basically sent an email to me. Can you hear me? Yeah, I see your eye. Can you hear me now? So he had sent an email to me indicating his, uh, request as to terms that would be included in the contract. We had a conversation, uh, after, after I received the request, uh, from the perspective of my asking about, uh, basically whether there was any room for negotiation in any of the terms. I did not feel it was my place to try to press the negotiation. I think it's commissions, uh, for the commission to decide where they go. But I wanted to make sure that when we started the negotiations with the commission that, uh, we were kind of at a spot where Mr. Flowers felt he was kind of towards the, the bottom of what he would accept. So without further, uh, prep this and Mr. Flower will jump in any comment if I say something that, that you think is not accurate, of course. But let me tell you what his basic terms are. Uh, he would like a base salary of 110, 110,000. He would like family insurance coverage to be provided. Uh, so family, uh, I think speaks for itself. Has to pay, has to pay the individual. He would like either the use of the city vehicle or $750 per month in car allowance. And a one-time moving stipend of $4,000. I'm going to do fast stopping. He would like a bank of vacation days when he walks in the door of 20 days with an approval of 20 more days per year. He proposed a three-year contract with the opportunity for renewal at the end of the term. Uh, and he would like a stipulation in that contract that he could offer termination within 90 days of any president city governing body election, uh, to, as he stated, ensure stability and continuity in leadership. In the event of termination without cause, he would like five months severance pay. And, um, he would like, uh, support to attend the Florida City County Manager Association Conference annually along with a biannual attendance at the International City County Management Association of the American Association of Judicial Executives Executive Conference, uh, even if that's out of state. So that would mean, uh, paying a membership in those organizations and then funding his, um, per diem and travel expenses, uh, to vote. And does that accurately state where we live off of in Flowers?
Uh, that's correct.
That is essential. Um, okay, commissions, um, let's talk about it. We have got, um, Sheila, it was advertised at, what was the range? It was up to 110?
110, 94 to 110.
94 to 110. And, um, when we did our study for managers' pay, city managers' pay, um, I think it came in where Sheila anywhere from 94 to 132. Is that correct? Very sure. Okay. Um, so, so that's where we are. So we're within, we're definitely within, within that range.
That was this experience, mutual experience. That seems to have reached me.
Could I also add, uh, one thing that I forgot, uh, because of us in conversation? But there would be a probationary period and that term would be, uh, six months. During this time, there could be a termination without any requirement paid in five months severance pay.
Okay, um, may I reflect? Yes. Okay, and this is partly for Mr. Holmes. Um, it's my understanding from our charter that we are not permitted to give a contract for a term.
Right.
And you, and you broke up at the very end, Mr. Vito. You said you're not permitted to give a contract for a...
Okay, in our charter, it's my understanding that we are not allowed to give a contract for a specific term.
Do you have that language? Well, you had it. You had pulled up because we had contracts in the past.
Yeah, and they weren't, um, Mr. Rudd's contract is not for a term. Right, it's, uh, section 3.02. Um, I was hoping Mr. Holmes would have reviewed the request for compliance with the contract. But 3.02, point number removal of the city manager hired by a majority vote of the full commission for indefinite term, subject to termination at any time upon previous vote of the full commission with at least 60 days notice or 60 days severance pay. So that's what's in our, let's just read the charter. Um...
So that, so that would basically eliminate the... So that, so that would basically eliminate the six month, I mean, the five month, severance pay that, that is a maximum allowed by Florida statute and would reduce that down to sixty days. That's the net effect of that. Because obviously you could not stop the city manager from giving you those of resignation, which he could choose to do it three years, two years, one year, or whatever. So, um, you know, about the, although I question the viability or the continued viability of that sort of a clause in your, in your charter. Nonetheless, it is there, it's there. But, uh, the three-year contract actually gives you some certainty, although I understand that the five-month, uh, severance pay or the term of that contract would be three months more than what your charter provides for.
Well, um, Mayor, if I could, to continue with Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Don, I don't know if you have in front of you our charter, section three point oh two. It seems to say at least sixty days notice. So isn't that saying that that's our minimum? That, aren't we allowed, if that's our minimum, at least sixty days notice or sixty days severance pay? Would that preclude us from providing more? Although, I mean, I can't imagine anybody leaving. But the, the other thing is, are we allowed to guarantee that we would not terminate anyone within so many days of an election? I don't, it sounds like our charter doesn't allow us to block out that time.
I don't think it speaks, I don't see where it speaks to that. I don't know, Don, that would be your interpretation. I don't know that it speaks to...
Well, it says indefinite term.
Well, but this is a ninety day, so we couldn't do anything for a ninety day period.
So I'm going to redo my, uh, screen. I'm going to try. And, uh, I can start maybe do this, but I'm actually leaving the process. But I'm going to redo my screen and pull up your charter for a minute so I can look at it as we talk. If you're with me while I attempt to do this, okay?
Sure. But, um, okay, Mayor, also the items I see, if we look at the contract with Mr. Rudd, I think the car allowance amount requested is, isn't that five hundred dollars a month greater than, um, what was provided for?
It is.
Mr. Rudd, okay, because I'm trying to figure out some, I think we need some dollar amounts on some of the items requested. Uh, the moving stipend, I don't think we did that for Mr. Rudd. But I meant, yeah, we do.
That would be something that we would, that we'd have, but just because we did it, didn't do it for one, he didn't request it.
No, I said, I'm trying to come up with amounts that are...
I understand, I understand.
In addition, I'm trying to put some dollar amounts on here.
Don, um, I also want, um, with that said, and with our charter, we have been in violation of our charter as far back as Patrick Kennedy. So Patrick Kennedy's contract allowed him for twenty weeks. I believe Esposito's, Mr. Esposito's did as well, and so did Charles. So we have been in violation. So being in violation of the charter back far back at any point, um, does practice, can you?
Well, um...
Because remember, our charter was created back many, many, many years ago.
So you were...
Did I, did I read, did I read right? I can't override that before we... Did I read right? So, we're, we're reading that? That's second, we're going to seven, that's not right? City manager shall propose, the city commission shall amend and adopt by vote of four minutes of the full commission and its administrative codes. Just that for the departmental organization of the city commission, including charts of the shared command, allocation responsibility of these definitions of the nature of the government and all required rules and procedures for administering said departments. I think it'd be a stretch to say that that, uh, that that offers the, uh, a four-minute removal of the city manager in three point oh two. But let me go back to that for a minute.
Mayor, I'm not saying I'm worried about that. I'm worried about the amount of pay that we have to, yes, Commissioner, to be there.
But, so how was it that we were in violation of our charter? I mean, I understand Patrick Kennedy had a contract for a specific term. There would be...
No, no, Patrick Kennedy was assured twenty, twenty hours of, I mean, twenty weeks of pay.
Which is the maximum.
Okay, but I don't think that's in our charter. Our charter sets a minimum, a maximum.
Does it say the minimum?
Yeah, that's what...
It says at least sixty days, or sixty days severance pay. It says at least, that's a floor.
Okay, sixty days severance pay.
Right, that's a floor.
But it did give us a minimum, I mean, a maximum.
I don't see one unless Mr. Holmes tells us differently.
Or such established...
But...
The twenty weeks is...
But what, what I was trying to do, with some of these items have a cost. So, um, like when I said, what car allowance did we give Charles Rudd? I'm just trying to figure out how this is, where this cost would be higher, what that cost would be. Because the salary would be higher, maybe we have to factor that into our...
So if you take that, if you take that in, so if you take that, if you take the, that's an additional six thousand dollars, that's an additional six thousand dollars a month in car allowance if we would come up to the seven hundred and fifty.
You mean six other years?
I mean, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
And then, um, the family health insurance, I noticed, that's a six...
We were at about eleven hundred dollars a month for...
For the employee only.
For the employee only, and then if we add family, Sheila, we're...
Next, probably, uh, depends on which plan he picks. It can be anywhere from, uh, two thousand nine hundred up to three, over three thousand dollars a month. A week, I mean, yes.
Not a week.
Month, month, I'm sorry, month.
A month, for the fam, for the wife and, and child?
Yes, depends on which plan he, he picks.
So we could...
Okay, so wait, let me just be clear. For the individual from Mr. Rudd, it was eleven hundred, right?
Approximately.
Right, and so our charter director is saying that could go up if we did the family coverage. I know where it's here, here.
Mr. Rudd was just for the employee?
Yeah, Mr. Rudd pays, the city contributes to Mr. Rudd. And Mr. Rudd paid one hundred percent of his wife out of his pocket.
Right, and that, that's our standard practice, correct? We, we make the family available, but they pay.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
We already have in there the support to attend the, I was at the conferences. So we got that. And they, we've already got that.
But is it any conference or...
Should be ICMA, FCCMA.
Um, I think it acknowledges in here that the ICMA and the FCCMA. And we pay for such attendance, I believe the cost of such seminar programs and the cost of staying there overnight, rooms, or any events, such seminars should continue one on one day every event.
So do we have a budget for that?
That's good, exactly.
That's in section seven, the first...
Okay, okay, I marked it, but I can't... And we don't, but I don't know that we could...
There's a wide item in the budget, though.
Yeah, there is a wide item for that in the budget.
But travel is very expensive, right? I don't, I don't remember Charles Rudd going to the international. Did he do it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's the same.
Yeah.
So it's a table. I mean, it is in the city's, I'm reading a budget I paid for. So we'll just match with it, we budget it for next year. I mean, it should be even more than what we have, but, um, currently.
That's why we pay very, you know...
Are, are...
For your train, yes.
All right, but, but ours, ours does not cover out-of-state travel. Ours covers basically one conference and that's, that's pretty much it if you claim all your expenses.
But he's the city manager, so that's, that's a little different, that's a little different. So I'm, 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 I'm fine with that, I'm absolutely fine with that.
And so the twenty hours vacation time is, that's split into three weeks?
Uh, yeah, I don't know. I mean, if we were to bank it annually, um, if we were just to do...
We can do by hours for inputs.
Yes, we do. So I, I don't under, I, I'm not sure that if we were to bank him twenty hours initially, I mean, twenty days initially, um, and then he wants to accrue, could we not just do it annually, just bank him?
Well, I think, Mayor, that's kind of splitting the method. I think currently we don't give an upfront vacation credit. But so for managers, I think it's more standard to give some upfront vacation.
I think we should.
So I think this would be a compromise between giving all the vacation upfront versus having vacation accrued and...
So you're good with it, so everyone is good with giving them twenty days initially and then allowing them to accrue?
Wait a minute, twenty days is for weeks. What was the vacation that we currently gave? Pardon?
What is three weeks?
That's four. Oh, it's, it's for business weeks.
Oh, five, that's four, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so what is vacation right now in the existing...
The current terms, right, to that, to leave banked, but...
No, no, but what they gave, what was the total vacation amount?
Okay, 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 one person. Sheila, do you recall yearly?
Um, Charles, I think he was like, uh, uh, I think it was three point nine per week.
So, yeah, you got three hours per week of annually not to exceed four hundred and eighty hours for annual leave and one and one-half hour per week for sick leave not to exceed four hundred and eighty hours.
Correct.
Annual leave will only be used in two-week intervals, um, two weeks at a time unless more time is approved by the city commission. Any hours accumulated, they are four hundred and eighty for annual leave and four hundred and eighty for sick leave will not be honored and such excess hours will last at the end of each budget just for a year. In addition, the city manager shall receive all of the holiday and leave benefits provided to city staff. Three times three, three times two, three times two, six, three times five, that's fifteen hundred and fifty-six hours.
Five, that's four weeks. Is almost four months, not half...
Quite, not a week. Quite a week, yeah, so it's long. Right, so that's what they gave you, right?
It's right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay. So the standard right now that we give is four weeks. He would be banking four weeks and then accruing, I can't read my own writing. What would, accruing another four weeks, so that would be two months of vacation?
Yeah.
And right now we provide for, um, it's a lot, it's a lot.
So, Mr. Flowers, um, as part of this negotiation, would you be open to us banking you the twenty? I'm just suggesting this, I want to see what he's open to because we can talk about this all we want, but we have to find out what he's open to. Um, are you open to us banking you the twenty hours and, um, twenty, twenty days? Sorry, I have to keep my hours and days right now. The twenty days and at the start of the fiscal year, in the fiscal year, then you could start accruing, um... Six months, that would be, yeah. How are you, how are you, how are you with that? So that would give you the four weeks first off when you start. Um, and then at the end of the fiscal year, which would be October, beginning of the new fiscal year, you could, um, begin accruing, um, as required.
So you're going to cut out under the, so you're saying twenty, you start off with forty days and then come October, start requiring at the rate of twenty days a year, is that what you're saying?
Yes. I'm just suggesting, that's just a suggestion so that we can start these discussions.
Yeah. I think that we want...
All right, it makes sense, it makes sense, okay.
So, we haven't agreed to it, I'm just asking, I'm just asking. So the commission has to agree to that, is that being part of the terms?
Okay, so, Mayor, I'm not quite clear. So are we going to provide a bank every...
Year?
No.
That would be an initial bank. Initial bank, and then in October, the start of the year starts, okay, to start accruing. Okay, so we've got that, so we can check that off. We've got the four thousand dollar moving allowance. How does everyone feel about the four thousand dollar moving, um, moving allowance?
In most employment agreements, it covers that.
It does.
And you're saying, you know, other costs too, so I don't think four thousand dollars is much to, uh, change for a year.
Commission, is everybody pretty much in agreement? Okay, so we'll do the four thousand, um, that's the moving allowance. Then that takes us to, let's get the salary out of the way, the hundred and ten thousand. So, um, how does everyone feel right now, currently? It's, it's definitely within the range. And we did ask all of our applicants, um, if they would be agree to the salary within the range. So it is, it was advertised. Um, I think we also have to keep in mind, commissioners, um, and it's difficult because everything we do, of course, is in the sunshine, so we need our discussions to get to that one. And, um, and, and we know where we are right now. So I'm just throwing that out there to each and every one of us that we have to think about that. That, um, you know, the, the good thing about him, Mr. Flowers, is that I advocate in either way, but that he is the city manager currently, so he understands, he has the experience necessary. And so that's just, that's part of the discussion, you know, we just need to keep that, stay to keep that in mind. And what are we looking for here?
Well, I think Mr. Flowers, um, you know, choice-wise, I mean, he definitely has the experience. And by Mr. Flowers, of course, I'm on over the hundred and ten thousand dollars because, uh, basically he's at that level. Personally, that's just my opinion, so...
And what was, and Charles, at the end of his three years, he was almost...
Right about a hundred.
A hundred.
Right about a hundred.
And Mr. Flowers does have more experience. He's coming to us as a city manager currently, so I, I'm fine with that. And with inflation and the experience, I think that brings us right to where...
So, Commissioner, my, my, my one comment about that is, I think that Mr. Flowers is a great choice. We're all impressed by his experience, as I am. But the other part of that is, I think we need to be really cognizant when we add up the other costs, that we know how much we're adding to our annual budget costs. Well, at this point, um, what I would rather we had in front of us, but we don't, so we still need to consider this, is with the rollback budget, we could not afford this. We've been told that there's, um, there was excess left over from last year, but we don't know where it came from or why.
I'm shocked with Steve because even if there's an excess and then we have that, we have that amount. I did go over with Steve, so as we go forward with the fund balance, that's not going to be occurring. So I asked him, um, with some of this, where would we be? Because we knew kind of the range of the salary. And I just wanted to make sure Steve was, um, in agreement that we would be, um, that financially we would be okay, that we would be okay with this. Is Steve here? Okay, yes, hey, Steve. So Steve, do you want to, um, with where we are? I'm sorry, I didn't know, I didn't see you come in that much here. Do you want to speak to that, Steve, as far as where we are from, from the salary and, and the benefits?
Yeah, we're still working on, uh, we're closing out the, the year end. My commissioner and I, we believe, I believe, I guess, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We'll back race somewhere in there, I think it was. So, um, it, it looks like we're going to, you know, we'll be okay with that.
Okay, but wait a minute, what was the part about, Mayor, you said the money was non-recurring? Or we expect to have that, those funds available in future years?
Those are not, that's not recurring, but every year we had a significant amount that has, um, that we've been able to fund balance over and above. So that's why really and truly this last year, we were able to do the rollback rate. Because of, because of that, because we have been able to meet our, our needs. But this, we've never been bank on that, so, so we don't know next year what, what it will be, um, so...
Right, so I'm just saying, with the rollback rate, we were very tight for funds in every department we cut. And if we're going to be increasing our salary... And if we're going to be increasing our salaries, which is an ongoing expense, we need to make sure that we can cover that.
And so Steve, do you feel that we are able to cover this?
Right now with the rollback rate, or I'm sorry, the roll forward, is yes, I do, fair enough.
Okay, then we would be able to, okay, because I'm just.
I'm just predicting. Okay, because does Steve have the additional cost that would be added to the city manager salary if we met all of Mr. Flowers' request? Because it looks like, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, the salary, the increase to the city manager salary line would be ten thousand dollars a year, Charles was at one hundred thousand, that's up.
Right.
So that'd be an additional ten thousand, um, the car, the full car allowance requested, Mayor, you said that would be an additional six thousand?
Six thousand, so. Six thousand.
Approximately two thousand a month for family health insurance. So that would be annually eighteen thousand a year, in addition to any increases, um, in travel or conference. Okay, so that's a total of eighteen thousand a year, and that will affect, um, social security and Medicare contributions, correct?
Correct. But now the car allowance, we have not agreed to the car allowance.
Right, so that's still a vacation. Right, so we're still discussing that. Right, but, um, I just want to lay out kind of the grandest thing of the dollars that are involved. And, um, so, and, um, just, so I'm, I'm fine with the salary as long as we feel that that can be quite a portion of our budget, as long as we can pay it. And Steve, he's he's a confident, he's leading this.
Yeah, with the term roll forward, as I mentioned, I've been discussing.
Okay, um, so that leaves us with a car allowance, with a car allowance, um, or a vehicle, so it's either or. Um, we currently don't have a vehicle, um, and so that's not, that's not an option, I don't know with car allowance, yes.
What, I mean, what would we be giving, um?
Two fifty.
Two fifty?
So he's double, he's he's double one.
Five hundred, I mean, seven fifty, so that's five hundred dollars more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, I thought it was, uh.
I mean, that's actually tr- triple.
Yeah.
That's triple.
Triple it. I mean, I don't. I thought it was six thousand dollars, I mean.
That's just a large additional.
Additional.
To more.
That would be the annual.
Yes.
Annual, if you annualize the additional five hundred, the mayor figured out that comes to six thousand a year.
More, more, yes.
Okay, that's more.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the grid, yeah, okay.
So, Mr. Flowers, how negotiable is that, I mean, we now have two square miles, um, how how negotiable is, is, is the car allowance?
Yeah, so I would say that, that the things that I have before are quickly becoming the industry standard, um, that's the first thing, the second thing is, uh, I'm pretty firm on that, um, I need that, just for the fact that, uh, and this is my job, well, obviously, but I've always been, uh, every police officer I had assigned, you know, uh, I'm sitting, you know, city manager now, I have assigned a vehicle, city provider for a vehicle, uh, and I do a lot, you know, I do, you know, I don't always use four miles, but I'm, um, where's the city goes, but, uh, running around doing things, uh, I'm used to the city truck now, but I need my vehicle to, you know, pick up stuff, supplies, whatever, those things to, you know, so, uh, I'm not really asking you anything, that's above beyond, uh, what I, what you're receiving, images are are getting these days, uh, so.
Yeah, and he was good, um, and I understand, and those trips to Black, I mean, anywhere, but the trips to Black, I mean, they do add up, I'm, I'm there a lot.
Yeah.
And the mileage, I mean, it does add up, so.
And maybe provided the car, please give it to our administrator, it just was all the cars, when the next one came along, so.
Yeah.
We haven't just started paying, and I don't, I don't think that should be, was, they have to tend to be now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it hasn't come up in a long time.
It hasn't.
And most, the, I see many contracts that it should happen, uh, a year of the increase anyway, so, I mean.
So, um, Steve, we're, yes, sir?
I'd say, I basically said, Mr. Don, I wanted a valid amount, but I did come off that two fifty in our conversation yesterday, uh, whatever it was yesterday, I think it was. Uh, so, uh, I did negotiate that down a little bit, the the car allowance, uh, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect to have to go out of state for any kind of training or anything this year, so I know your budgets already been set, I get that. Uh, so I wouldn't, so, I mean, I would as far as next year, uh, as far as any out of state travel for any kind of training or anything like that, uh, sure, you get what I need there, uh, in Florida to begin with, uh, but, uh, that's a, already I did, I put it on my expense, uh, but, uh, the first year, just to help out, and, um, um, so I understand, I believe the salary, since your offer is fair, uh, with the benefits that I can get enough, I'd actually be making less money than my current job, you know, so I'm just giving you that, and, uh, and also just, just the fact that, uh, again, and I'm not asking you to be able to take this extremely, uh, that's the normal standard, uh, you know, there's other candidates, I know there are, you know, all these other guys that interview, there were some nice guys, and they had some good experience, uh, but I'm not looking to build my resume, I'm looking to kind of make a difference there, uh, I'm committed to four years at least, probably longer, but at least four years for, since Jay is out of high school, uh, so just letting you know that, um, we're going, we're going to do some good things, you know, and, uh, that's what I'm asking these things, and.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you another thing, Mr. Flowers, um, I know that typically when you're looking for, when you're looking for other employment, um, are are we competing right now in competition with anybody else?
Uh, what was the first one, kind of that, how?
Well, I know typically when you're looking, you know, I know you're looking to move to Florida, so I'm sure that you have probably applied elsewhere. Are we competing with anybody else right now?
I'll take it through, I interviewed three cities, the city of Florida, and it says December, twenty something hours was, uh, the city of Hawthorne was the first, and they selected her, you were the second, and they selected me, thank y'all very much, uh, and then, uh, I did an interview right after that, four weeks early negotiations, uh, with the city of Madison, and they actually voted by zero as well, offering me a contract, which they're not leaving until Friday, uh, and I let them know about you, and I told them that, I've been upfronted that you're on my first choice, uh, these new couple of locations, uh, especially for my wife's work. And that, uh, and I I think they're probably watching.
Well, Madison's a nice place, but it makes you be happier in Madison, I think.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with Madison, I know exactly how long it takes to get from there to Orlando.
Yeah, I just drove through, I just drove through Madison, I just drove through Madison, and it's probably snowing there right now.
Um, actually, it is, so, um, that if we.
And and Mayor, let's say one more thing, there was, there was a, I think there was a gentleman who tried to hire me again for a second time in, uh, two years, and I let them, and I talked to them, but I let them pull me off because, uh, I was, after I was capped, I got it all, and after we had our, both our meetings with you, uh, I felt confident this is where I wanted to be.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I just want to say one thing about the gas thing, um, because that's kind of where, well, should be discussing. But but, you know, I've gone to two meetings in Orlando, and I've actually, uh, asked for that money to be reimbursed for my gas. And we reimbursed, I think, sixty-five cents, uh, per mile, if I'm not mistaken, I, I think that's what we reimbursed us. And and just, I'm just trying to put it in perspective for people, uh, that it's about a hundred miles, okay, uh, to to go to and from Orlando. And so it's about, you know, sixty-five dollars every time I go, I'm just putting it in, you know, just easy numbers. It adds up very quickly, gas adds up extremely quickly, quickly. So I'm looking at my budget, my training budget, and I've already eaten into it, you know, uh, you know, for the gas. And so, um, that's what we have to kind of look at, it it's just expensive to drive around, and I know there's there, it is in full back up, full up. Um, you know, back and forth, back and forth, and it does, it just adds up, but.
So, oh, go ahead, then. Just to be clear, so is the seven hundred and fifty a month in lieu of any reimbursement? That's a, that's an overall figure, and it's in lieu of any specific mileage reimbursement?
That should be, except for mileage, and and that's separate, it hasn't.
That's a city act, yeah.
Yeah.
Except, because I.
When you go to the professional development.
Okay, so for regular business, okay, so we would not be, that's an excellent point, Commissioner Burton, so that's in lieu of, um, travel reimbursement?
And let me, um, let me ask you this, um, Don, both you and Mr. Flowers, so if at such time we were to come into a vehicle for the city manager, um, is that something that we could put in there unless such time, you know, the city provided, um, a vehicle, a city manager vehicle?
Sure, and yes, you could, I mean, your, the contract could be drafted in the alter of this, so this states that you provide either a vehicle or a car allowance, a given amount, you can live the life. I did need to go back and address the charter for a second, as well, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I, uh, agree that your charter states that the contract is supposed to be, or the appointment is for an indefinite term. Um, and if your contract with Mr. Rudd was for an indefinite term, um, that's two ways to read in that Mr. Rudd's, uh, contract appears to be filed in your charter, and that it provided for twenty weeks severance pay in the event he was, uh, terminated without cause, uh, at any time. He was received a lump sum cash payment equal to twenty weeks, um, a full five months, it was four point three weeks in a month, but twenty weeks, which, uh, as was pointed out, is in excess of the compensation provision provided for the charter, which states that he has to receive at least sixty day notice, so he can receive sixty day notice and no termination pay or ninety day notice or whatever, because it said at least sixty day notice, or the alternative sixty day severance pay. So that is a clause that basically, as I interpret, will allow termination with notice without additional compensation after the notice period expired. Uh, I am not able to advise anyone to incorporate or review the term that violates the charter. I I agree that provision, in my opinion, is, um, is not a, uh, let's just say, I I don't believe it's, uh, a wise provision to have included in the charter, but here, and, um, from my perspective, I I I'm just not able to advise that you violate your charter, even though I understand it's been done in the past. Um, in terms of remedy, uh, you know, a provision for compensation that, uh, violates the charter basically could be raised as a challenge, uh, and it could be raised, it might be at a point in time when that scenario might arise, so it might not be a challenge at this point, but if there should be a time in the future when, uh, a, um, when a termination without cause occurred, and you propose to pay twenty week salary, then there could be a challenge at that point based upon the fact that that term violates the charter. Now, um, I do think that you can interpret this clause so as to allow for the sixty day severance pay, um, by stating that you could terminate without cause with no notice, well, you know, immediately termination, immediate termination but with payment of sixty days severance pay and not violate the charter. Unfortunately, if you call it in your charter, like most, it's not easily amended, you have, you could propose an amendment by by ordinance, um, but, uh, you would then have to submit a proposal to the vote of the electors at the next general election or a special election called for that purpose. Uh, so, you know, it's not an easy process to amend your ordinance, but I think that that clause is one that you could find limiting in the future, it's not now. The other side of it is that since there is no contract, um, if you terminate at any point in the future, three and a half years, whatever, then the severance pay would be absent, but also this is for indefinite term, unless you terminate for cause. So, uh, it's not a welcome renewal, in my opinion, the sixty days instead of, so you're talking about roughly eight weeks, um, instead of twenty weeks, in terms of a without cause termination package, so. And that's, uh, I'm just, I'll, I'll leave my comment at that, uh, for you to, to blend that into your conversation, however you mind, but, uh, that that's an issue that I think needed to be addressed.
Well, sixty days, I mean, I I guess it's, so you, so you read it, not the way I read it, that that was our, that was the the max that we could, that we could pay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we took sixty and sixty days, that we would be paying them for sixty workdays. So that would be twelve weeks. Is that correct?
Twelve weeks.
Is it sixty day days or sixty calendar days?
Sixty divided by five, but you're really paying them for.
Anyway, it doesn't say calendar days, I mean, it doesn't say workday, it says sixty days, I think you have to give it its plain meaning, uh, and having sixty days. So I don't believe you can interpret that to be sixty workdays, I think that's sixty days.
Okay, so that would be eight weeks, okay, so eight weeks, and then it's twenty weeks, so that's twelve weeks. Is there any remedy, is there any remedy in that, um, and where do you get us to that, to that twenty week, to that twenty week mark? The outside of, outside of, yeah, outside of a charter amendment, um, that?
Well, it's not, it's not a little practical way, but, I mean, so if I assume that you were to terminate without cause, it would be for, and there's another clause that I need to mention, but I'll, I'll say that ultimately in your mind, I still have it in there. But if you assume that you were going to terminate without cause, theoretically possible that you could extend the notice period uh, to eight to to a hundred and twenty days, which would be, I guess, that would be your sixteen weeks, right, a hundred and twenty, roughly, um, and pay him for the entire time, have have the termination effective at the expiration of the notice period following.
Yeah.
It says, and it says at least sixty day notice, so it doesn't say what the maximum would be. Theoretically, you could get twenty week notice period with him receiving pay during that period, uh, the only thing that that, of course, I guess complicates is if things have reached a point where you're not happy with him or he's not happy with you, but he doesn't resign, then, um, then you're putting up with each other for an additional period of time, whether you, it doesn't say you couldn't suspend it either during that time, you know, it doesn't say that. So theoretically, you could, you could give him, and I'm just, I'm talking out loud, and unfortunately, because of the sunshine, you have to talk, you have to think out loud and in in the public, but theoretically, I guess, you could provide for a twenty week notice period, retaining the option of suspending him from performing his duties during that time, but receiving pay during that time. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Right, so we were putting on, right, we're putting on suspension with pay.
Exactly, I mean, and I don't see that violates the charter, although I would admit that's an imaginative interpretation of it, but I don't believe it violates it. And the statute appears that you violated it, but at least your licensing manager may be the one before that as well.
We've been violating it since Patrick Kennedy came on at least, and I don't have the one prior to that, so.
So, thank you for putting that up, so where are we now?
Can I, can I ask one other question, if it's possible, uh, Don, does this guy help that if, uh, so if you pay your hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, equivalent to twenty weeks, be forty two thousand, is it prohibitive if you give a flat fee? And we're reading the bond fee, I mean, you said that be forty two thousand, is it, is that prohibitive, like, say, you buy without. Is it, is it prohibitive, like say you'd be barred without, or they'll pay you, whatever you decide here, uh, the 20 weeks would be about 42,000 dollars, so, and we said, I say, you know, 35,000 last fee with that, with that thing. Essentially, it's the same thing you're doing.
Yeah, the charter...
It's in the language.
Right, the charter doesn't speak to, if we were to do a flat fee, just that it speaks to the weeks, correct? So would that allow...
It says 60 day severance pay.
Okay.
I, I, I think if you're paying more than 60 day severance pay on the annualized salary at once in, then you're violating that provision of the charter in a, a severance pay package. Again, I didn't write this term, I'm not a fan of it, but it says with at least, at least, and that's where I got the wiggle root that I expressed earlier, 60 day notice, and it doesn't say that that notice is without pay. Or, either notice or 60 day severance pay. And I don't think you can, you can interchange an amount for that 60 day that isn't commensurate with the annualized salary proportionately reduced to 60 days.
Well, realistically, if, realistically, if we were to put him on, um, if we were to, uh, cancel his contract with us, to relieve him of his duties, I mean, that's because obviously we want him, we want him out, we want him gone, or the commission wants him gone, so...
Not that that would happen.
Not that that would ever happen, I mean, hasn't happened, at least so far. Um, so with that said, I mean, I, I like, I do like that language that you said that we would put him on, um, suspended, suspendedly with pay for 120 days. Um...
Right, the theory would be that if you're giving him notice, then you may not want him to act if they can manage as city manager for obvious reasons. I mean, for the same reasons that a lot of corporations, if they terminate someone, they escort them to the gate right then and take away their access to computers and things. Now, I'm not making any comment about Mr. Flowers, that don't interpret it that way. I'm just saying, if you're talking about industry standards and practices, then normally, if someone's terminated without cause, certainly with cause, but without cause, then, you know, there's, there's not a desire to, normally, to, to have them continue to function in their capacity where they theoretically might not make decisions in the best interest of the body that terminated them. So, but I don't see anything in here that would, that would prohibit, like I said, a notice period of mandatory. Build into your contract, notice period of more than 60 days, and it doesn't say in the charter that that 60 day notice period is without pay. So I don't see anything in here that would directly conflict with your saying, okay, you're gonna, uh, you know, we're going to, uh, give you notice of termination of 20 weeks. During that time, you'll receive full pay, uh, and, uh, but you will be, uh, your, your, your all relations for performing the duties of city manager will be suspended. You could even also build in a clause that states that he's free to seek outside employment during that time. I mean, I think all of those things would be yet, yet given. Obviously, uh, you could argue that that is not in the spirit of what's in the charter, but it doesn't directly violate it. And, uh, and, and so that's, that's what I'm trying to argue, so that's...
So, no, so let me ask you this also. Could we somehow or another with vacation leave, um, could we...
It already titles, well, of course, Roy had listed titles, receive vacation leave, as you probably know.
Approved, that he has approved, that he has approved, so...
It said re-vacation time, 50% re-vacation leave, and the city would pay the city manager's cover payments for 20 weeks of termination until the city manager is re-employed and marries child insurance business, which is where it shall potentially be employed and marries child insurance business. So under Roy's agreement, you're given 50% re-vacation pay, you're, you're not 50% re-vacation leave. And I don't think there's anything that in the charter that prohibits you doing that. Um, now, um, I don't believe there is, I don't know if there's...
There's not, no, there probably, there probably isn't. So I'm just wondering if somehow or another we can fill that difference into that, just to make it...
I don't know, I mean, there's, there are, um, I don't know if there's any kind of, uh, so it's not a retirement benefit, so you risk, uh, the federal statute would not directly apply. Uh, so I, I mean, but the, but the problem is, you know, he's accruing vacation time, it's, did you say he's accruing about 3 hours a week? Is that what you said?
That is what this contract has, yeah, he's gonna get the initial 20. He init, he gets the initial...
So his first six months are probation. So at the end of six months, he's accruing roughly 12 hours a month. Uh, a little bit more, say 13 hours a month. Then in six months, he would have accrued, what, 78 hours of vacation time? And under this, and, and he can't be terminated, his first six months, he can be terminated without, um, any other, other than the probation, he can be terminated without benefits. So after he clears the probation period, you've already accrued, uh, he was about 78 hours roughly of vacation time. So what happened, that's about 35, 39 hours. I don't know how old the rate is, but you have that built in there. Uh, but that's my, that's my, that's the type of, type of money we're talking about on, on making the difference up between, between eight 60 days and, uh, 8 20 weeks. So, I mean, maybe you could come up with a different option than what I suggested, but, but I, I just, I would not be able to advise you to directly violate the charter.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely not, um, we understand that. So, Mr. Flowers, we'll pick that there. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
It's a question from us all. So when we look at our charter provision that we've been talking about with the 60 days notice, it's, the simple question is, it says at least 60 day notice. So you're saying you don't think the at least applies to the 60 day severance pay? That the phrase...
I don't, but it doesn't say that. It says within at least 60 day notice or 60 day severance pay. It doesn't say within at least 60 day notice or at least 60 day severance pay. So, I mean, if, if, I mean, again...
Okay, 'cause I read it with the at least applying to both the 60 days notice or the 60 days severance pay.
It's more in there, though. I like choosing your vegetables on your side, you either get a salad or soup.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about grammar. Um, so, I mean, my, my thought was there, that there's no reason the at least would not apply to either of those things. But you're saying you and Mayor leave the 60 day severance pay as a cap and that the at least does not apply to the 60 day severance pay?
Well, you know, statutory construction is something that, and, and contract construction is something that I guess I've dealt with for a long time now. And normally, you know, the rule of thumb is you give, you look at it and give it its plain meaning. And you assume that if the author had intended a different meaning, they would have, that they knew how to make, make that different meaning known. When I look at what I see in here, I say with at least 60 day notice. And then it doesn't say more than at least 60 day severance pay. It says with at least 60 day notice or 60 day severance pay. The difference there being that theoretically, that if you get 60 day notice, but you're still getting the benefit of the effort of the city manager during that notice period, but it doesn't say that they're suspended. With a 60 day severance pay, you're not, you're not getting any, any return benefit of service.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's my interpretation. If you said, hey, we're going to adopt a different interpretation, I'm not going to tell you you can't, uh, adopt a different interpretation of that. Um, and only a court could really say which is the, you know, which is the preferred, uh, interpretation. I, I, that's what we ought to be, but again, if you wanted, if you wanted to look at it and say, well, we, we think they intended to do it differently, then, uh, I'm not going to argue with your interpretation.
I just want to make note for the public, for the record, I'm looking at Commissioner Morris's phone, and I'm reading the charter. She has it pulled up on her phone, that is what I'm reading, so then...
Yeah, so, um, yeah, there were, there, I don't know, and, and, and look, I, I get the fact that, um, that you look at documents all the time that aren't, as artfully worded, and you might lie, and you say, man, I think that they, I think they intended to make that period commensurate. Um, but I, you know, if you look at that next sentence, it also says that, that the city managers have no vested rights of office other than those specifically provided in this charter. Uh, so I, I mean, I'm looking at it and saying, okay, they, they say at least 60 day notice, I get that much. They could have said, you know, or equivalent period of severance pay or something, but it says more than 60 days. I interpreted it one way, but if you told me you interpreted that, that to be a life period, I, I can't tell you that, that, uh, that I would say that your interpretation isn't one that could be accepted by a court. And if that's the case, then I can't tell you that, that categorically you'd be violating your charter.
Okay, so, Mr. Flowers? Um, I'm gonna go back to my question, we had a little pickup here. Um, and so with the recommendation that Mr. Hanks has made that we would put you on, um, we would include in here that if you are relieved without cause, that it would, we would put you on a hundred and, what did we say, 120 day notice?
That's six months, is that six months?
Yes.
120 days.
How many?
You know, that's a long time to work with somebody if you don't want...
No, 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 nobody on administrative leave. So he's, he's gone, we're gonna pay him during that time.
Are you gonna pay him for 120 weeks?
No.
120 days?
120 days.
20 weeks.
Which would be 20 days.
20 weeks. Let's make sure we get the language there.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, to make sure that he's, Mr. Flowers understands where, what Dawn is, what, what Dawn has, um, suggested.
Madam Mayor, might you want to take a vote, uh, before, and I'm just, this is a suggestion, I thought, might you might, might you want to take a vote of your commission as to their interpretation of the 60 day severance pay clause in the contract? In other words, uh, might you want to take a vote as to whether they interpret the 60 days to be modified by the same verbiage, quote, at least, that appears in front of the 60 day notice provision?
Okay. So we can do that, so we want to read that, somebody wants to read that, appointment and removal of administrative supervisor, based on the charter.
I can't do, I'm sorry.
So based on the charter, so we need to also include that, probably have a reading for that language, so that we...
No, I mean, right now, my question is, right now, you know, I told you that I gave you an interpretation, I've also told you that I can't, I could not guarantee you that a court would accept my interpretation. If you, if you're, if you as a commission interpret that differently and believe the intent was to allow for more than 60 day severance pay, then, then you would not be directly violating your charter, you'd be making an interpretation in good faith. My question is, would you want to take a vote of your commission as to whether you interpret that provision to allow more than 60 day severance pay instead of allowing more than 60 day notice? If you did, then you just go ahead and do what you've done in the past, which is grant the additional time of severance pay, and go down with the Rudd, the Rudd contract, and I guess you said Patrick Kennedy contract.
So this is a question.
Okay, so, yes, Commissioner DiVito?
No, I'm just saying, that's how I interpret it, as both of them being a floor, not, a floor, not a cap. That's what I interpret it.
I, I'm, I'm having a hard time with you, I'm having a hard time with you.
Commissioner DiVito just, just said that it's her interpretation that that is a floor and not a cap for, for both the time period and the dollar comment, okay?
Then she can make that motion to adopt that interpretation, and if all of you agree to it, then you proceed on that basis, and it's a record, and like I said, at that point, then you're negotiating. In my opinion, you made an interpretation which you consider being good faith as to the intent of the director of this document, and you move forward without that 60 day severance pay restriction.
Okay, and Commissioner DiVito, you might also want to include it there, but it's still in the past history of contracts, I mean, something to that effect. So I'm seeing that that's, obviously, that was Mr. Asbury's interpretation also.
Right, okay, so, um, I move that our, the Crescent City Commission adopt, um, the meaning, or adopt the interpretation of Section 3.02 on appointment and removal of the city manager, the language that says, uh, subject to termination at any time upon a briefiss vote of the full commission, quote, with at least 60 days notice or 60 day severance pay, based on the plain, length, the reading of the language and the past practice by past attorneys in developing, uh, city manager contract, that the 60 days notice and the 60 days severance pay are minimum floors that we may provide, but not a cap.
Second, go.
So we have a proper motion, and second, Commissioner, should we have any further discussion?
No further discussion. Melli, if you do a roll call, force please. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Lori?
Aye.
Commissioner DiVito?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
So approved. And I do have my phone, um, I prefer to my phone. I, I just want everybody to know, I'm not reading text, I'm not reading anything else that's not allowed when you're up here. Um, so I, I'm, I'm looking at a calculator, I'm looking at a calculator, so just, just for the record. And just for the record, I've been using my calculator quite frequently since I've been, just done.
Okay, so that eliminates, that eliminates the prohibition, uh, that was raised regarding the charter concerning the severance pay and the prohibition concerning the term of the contract will remain. So, uh, so the contract would have to be indefinite, okay? Obviously, it could be, there could be a resignation by, by Mr. Flowers, so he, he would, there's no forced servitude in the United States anymore. So, uh, he can resign when he wants to, but the term would not be for a, a, it would be more than that term, minus that term of years, okay?
The only thing we have, I think, remaining right now is, is the insurance, the family insurance coverage.
We don't, we aren't really sure about the costs of that, all right? We, we think it is what it is, okay? Well, yeah, I mean, we, we don't have actual numbers. Yeah, but some of those costs are...
And, you know, and I do know, I do know this, that back on, like, years ago, and I'm sure it's probably still that way when you're in senior management in state government, um, that was made them, that was provided, is that your family received, um, full medical coverage. Um, so that is oftentimes in senior management, that is a program that we, that we have. I mean, that's, that's up to us, though, whether or not we want to, um, have that category, because once you have that in there, you know, if you're, if you're...
If Flower was to leave, other people, yes. So my only question is, and I don't know this about our family insurance, is, is there a flat fee or do they have to be, um, waived? You know, can they be, can family members be denied, you know, because of pre-existing conditions? Do they, so in other words, there's a set rate for the family coverage that everyone gets? Okay, and you think right now that it's approximately $2,000 a month, different, or...
I, I have to go back and pull this, but I believe for a family and a child, it may be close to the rate.
You got a more...
Okay. Really, that's how, no, annually, that's...
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. I think, I mean, just pull...
Oh, I'm not?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Johnson has the copy.
Okay, do you want to go, take that from Johnson?
Yeah, why don't you say, let me have the copy.
Thank you.
Because $2,000, that's...
Twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty four thousand dollars to you.
Right.
Everything else, so Dawn was, um, or Mr. Flowers, did he have an opportunity to review, um, what Charles is... Everything else, so Don was, um, or Mr. Flowers, did he have an opportunity to review, um, what Charles's contract was, or have you talked about that, or did he just send you his terms?
I, I don't know if he had a chance to see it or not, I have to be certain of it, I don't remember if it was sent to him, uh, as well.
Probably not, that's it.
But, um, I can certainly, or you can send it to Ryan Downey live, or somebody can, if you're lucky. I probably can do, I'm worried that he might be.
Yeah, but that's crazy.
But, um, Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Walker is out, I'm gonna take a brief break, I'll be right back, if that's okay with you?
Okay, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna do a five minute process. So this is what we have in front of us, so what Sheila has is, there's, we have several options, there's four options, she put two of the top options. So the one is thirteen oh seven ninety-two for the employee only, for the employee and spouse, it's twenty-six fifteen eighty-three. For the employee and their family, the entire family, it's thirty-seven twenty-seven fifty-six. The other one is eleven forty-one eighteen for the employee only, for the spouse, it's twenty-two eighty-two thirty-five. For the employee's family, it's thirty-two fifty-two thirty-five, of course Sheila said that. The light blue is different, is it? It's just a different policy, different coverage, okay? So the preferred one by employees is the, um, the, the dark blue, the.
It should be that, I think it's fourteen oh.
Fourteen one oh three, okay, which comes out to the employee and family being thirty-seven twenty-seven fifty-six.
Is this per year?
Per month.
Per month.
Yeah, that, I mean, shoot, we.
Well, so you're, 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 you're talking about an employee with family insurance payment of thirty-seven hundred dollars a month?
Yes.
Yeah, right, so that's an additional, by my calculations, two thousand four hundred and twenty a month, which would exceed what per year, employment is, is over twenty-eight, is twenty-eight eight hundred, approximately twenty-eight, twenty-nine hundred dollars. But twenty-nine thousand dollars annually. Okay, so Mayor, if I could, just for us to be considering, with the salary increase, that's ten thousand a year, additional to what we're paying now. The car allowance increases an additional six thousand, so that's sixteen thousand a year. That's a sixteen percent increase over what we currently have allotted in our budget item, line item. If you add to that, adding the sixteen thousand, that would be increased in the city manager budget line. If you add twenty-nine thousand to include full family coverage, including a child, by my calculations, and I'm not very good at this, that would be, and then the total additional cost excluding, um, social security and Medicare payments to the federal government, would be an additional forty-five thousand dollars a year. And so that's, that's how much more we would be, um, committed to through the city manager's budget line.
Okay, um, and that includes the additional salary dollars, correct?
I, and let me know if I left something out, I included the ten thousand dollar additional salary amount, since Mr. Rudd was at one hundred thousand. The, um, increase in the car allowance to seven hundred fifty a month was six thousand dollars a year. So that's sixteen thousand, and then the mayor calculated, um, the annual cost of providing full family, spouse plus family.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand. Right, so I add those together, and again, forty-five thousand dollars. Which is almost fifty percent, well, not really, cause we, we didn't really calculate into, I'm basing that on the salary, not the salary plus the car allowance, plus Mr. Rudd's individual insurance.
Which was?
Hundred.
Which was?
Twelve.
Which was?
So let, let me add one more question, um, there is no mention of retirement. In the RUD contract, there was going to be an angle about ten percent of the salary to be paused into retirement account. Is that not, um, something that's been, uh, that was requested by Commissioner Flowers, so I'm just, but I'm asking about tracking the RUD contract, is that supposed to be a expense that's eliminated?
Um, I don't see that as being eliminated, but I was, an assumption, that my assumption was that we, my understanding was rather, that we said we would use the RUD contract as the base to go up out.
Okay, I was asking, because if that was not supposed to be in there, then that would be a, a thousand dollar reduction, and that's different, but if it is going to be included in there, then it actually will be an increase over a, an additional one thousand dollars, plus eleven hundred dollars, plus a set of ten percent annual salary, so roughly a hundred, is that right, or ninety?
Oh, a hundred.
It was added by a hun, by a hundred, which is.
So that'd be, that'd be an additional eleven hundred dollars, and there would be a few more in there, and ten percent of that.
Is there, so let me, let me ask you this, Mr. Flowers. Um, have you looked at coverage, individual coverage for your wife and child, um, that could possibly, um, I mean, that's more than if you went out into the private works, workplace and got your own insurance. Sheila, that's.
It's expensive. We only have to read people here that have that.
The, at that, well, I understand why, I understand why, I mean, that's, I mean, we could get insurance individually, I think, for sixteen hundred dollars for the two of us, um.
I don't, from my understanding, talking with, um, the insurance agent we have, Jimmy Ryer, we have some employees that is out there, that came in with their own insurance, uh, who wanted the Obamacare.
Yeah.
I am, so, but from my understanding, once they found out you were working and your employee paid eighty percent of your insurance,
you got.
you could not keep that insurance.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
Charles Rudd, uh, the, the city agreed to provide only him, because they pays only for the employees.
Only for the employees.
Correct. So, so when I'm looking at all this, are, are we planning to pay for the whole family?
That's it's a request, that's it's a request.
That's a request.
So we're in negotiations right now as to whether or not willing to do, whether or not we're able to do that.
So, and Mayor, if I could, I, I, when I said there would be an additional forty-five thousand for that line item, um, I wasn't comparing apples to apples, and I'm not the best person to do this, um, but I was, I think I miscalculated, I think it's more like thirty thousand additional, it'd be great if our finance director could help us with this. It's somewhere between thirty thousand and forty thousand, um, I wasn't providing, um, for the additional, I wasn't providing for the cost of Mr. Rudd's, um, insurance that we pay, that's what I wasn't providing for. I didn't include in Mr. Rudd's insurance and Mr. Rudd's salary allowance, that would bring the payments for him exclusive of taxes to one, one hundred and fifteen thousand that we were paying for Mr. Rudd, for that salary line.
Okay, well, for the insurance, we thought that did out, I took it and I backed out his, the difference, and then we calculated it, so it came out twenty-nine thousand thirty-five.
Right, just.
For the, for the insurance.
Right, but I'm saying, then you add on the additional six thousand for.
Right.
The, um, the car allowance, and there was something else.
Percentage of, for the insurance.
Right, and that.
I think that, for, for Carlos, it's forty-five thousand dollars more than what we're paying for it.
I'm, no, no, it's not, it's, I mean, when you take it into account, it's, it's not necessarily salary, it's the whole compensation added, sure.
When you do about both, about both, I think it's more like thirty, but again, how?
Yeah, Serena, I believe you are correct, uh, listen, twenty-nine thousand that you added for insurance was the difference between family coverage and individual coverage, or maybe individual coverage for Rudd, but by adding the family coverage, that would be an additional twenty-nine thousand a year. So I think your, the initial number that you decided and added included the correct amount for insurance, the rest was twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Right, yes.
So you got twenty-nine, twenty-nine insurance, ten per salary, six for car allowance.
That's forty-five.
Five there, so twenty-nine, twenty-nine, forty-five, what's that, you're right.
Thank you, Don, I have no idea I could get that right. Actually, it's forty-five thirty-five, forty-five thousand thirty-five dollars, okay. So we've got to make a, that's, that's where we are right now, is we've got to decide what we want to do as far as the insurance. Now, we, we, we have some options, um, possibly, that, um, we cover his, and then we add an allowance for him to try, but Sheila, you're saying that insurance companies, um.
Through the Affordable Care Act.
If you went through the Affordable Care Act.
Well, it's easier, but your employer is now, is the model, especially with this kind of salary, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to get, uh, the Affordable Care Act.
Right.
So they just need to move on to other insurance.
I mean, twenty-four hundred dollars a month for two people, um, that's, that seems excess, an excess, um.
Mayor, I think you just, Mayor, I think this too, that's definitely something I would absolutely look at when I got there, to reduce all that, I'm sure, I'm sure there's, there's gotta be, uh, Florida Municipal Association or something, that has some kind of group plan that kind of reduce that cost, I imagine that there is, there is in other states. So it is, it is, um.
And Mr. Flower, would you, would you suggest, instead of us trying to calculate a number, uh, that number was thirty-seven thirty-two, would you be willing to suggest a number that the city would contribute towards your acquisition of insurance?
Yeah, not, it's not, it's not, I would have to, I would, I would have to research and see how much insurance costs down there, you know? But I know what other cities in Florida are, are paying for the same thing, I can imagine it won't count the others that much difference, and I, I was hesitant for expensive, but, uh, I don't know what kind of, how we would, uh, that'd be something I'd definitely have to look at when I got down there to start it, you know, to help y'all, you know, to reduce that cost, you know, we shouldn't end up saving everybody's costs, but, um.
Well, negotiation are negotiations, and I understand that very well, but you, you have been referencing industry standards, and I've got to tell you, having served the city manager in Palatka, having negotiated a new city manager contract, I don't feel the industry standard, I think industry standard probably is for the employee, providing insurance coverage for the employee, and maybe some contribution towards family, but I, I don't think industry standards provide full cost of full family health insurance. And I pay my own, if I am, then someone can tell me, but it's not what I'm stating, you know?
Well, I don't disagree with that, I said this would quickly come in here, um, you know, uh, you know, this quickly come in there, though.
What if we just split the, uh, I think the, the major cost that I hear thirty-seven twenty-seven, was that the highest cost that included the family with the thirty-seven higher, and I'm like.
Color is the thirteen oh seven, but we take it up to thirty-seven twenty-seven fifty-six, which is an additional twenty-four nineteen sixty-four a month.
So, so what if we just split that in half and, and, and do, exactly what Don is kind of saying, give him, give him, uh, I think it goes up to eighteen hundred and sixty-four dollars towards his medical, uh, payment or medical benefits? You see what I'm saying?
We can pay for his, we can.
Well, that would pay definitely for his, but then whatever is left, he can do whatever, he can just go and look out for whatever he want to find, but it certainly would pay his way.
Commissioner De Vito? So wait, I was, what I expected Commissioner Burton to say was that we would adhere to the existing contract and pay for Mr. Flowers, but that we would contribute toward his family cost.
Well, and it, and, and that's kind of what I'm saying, but I kind of added it all together, so in other words, you know, thirteen hundred, I guess, would go towards the employee, and then the other, uh, five hundred or so that's left would be used to look for whatever, uh, towards his family.
So you're gonna give him a five, so you're, you're giving him a five hundred dollar family, family coverage allowance?
You see what I'm trying to? Yeah, something like that.
And I was gonna say something, probably seven hundred.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just threw it out there as an idea, so that we can. Yeah, I, I mean, I just threw it out there as an idea, so that we can kind of get...
Yes.
Good.
So, well, and I think that, um, okay, so I need a motion. And what we needed to find out from Mr. Flowers, if, if that would even be an, if that, that would be an option. So currently, Mr. Flowers, right now, we're giving you the twenty days bank, um, of, of annual leave. Um, we didn't address sick leave, that would be accrued, I guess, on, on a, a regular basis, just like we have done in the past, if that's acceptable. Um, and then you would start accruing your annual leave, additional annual leave, uh, October first of twenty-twenty-five. We've got a four thousand dollar moving allowance, we have a salary of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, we've worked out this twenty weeks, um, severance pay should, after your probationary period, should we relieve you of duties without cause? Um, and now we're at the insurance, and so we're saying that we would pay for your insurance, and also we've got the ten percent that we have in our contract to, for your, um, uh, for your retirement, retirement, that is, I believe, one point five percent more than what the employees are right now, Sheila. They have the, so they're at FRC's, that Florida Retirement Credit Appellate Party.
But you, you got ten percent built into the RUD contract, that would be an annual salary.
Right. Um, so we've got that ten percent, so what they're proposing is to pay for your insurance. That's where we are now, is to pay for your insurance, um, and then give you, you're saying, a five hundred dollar allowance for his family or...
It's in between, you know, seven hundred and, I don't know, probably thirty...
I think realistically, a thousand dollars should be able to cover him, I'm gonna provide him with some somewhere insurance policy or something close to it, but...
I would say up to a thousand.
Up to a thousand. Um, and I, and the other caveat of that is if he is able to, I think we would, we have to do this because we're not even giving him a thousand dollars if his insurance comes in at eight hundred. So it would be, um, up to...
That's what I just said.
With proof of insurance, with proof of insurance, yes.
Okay, so, I, I mean, but, yeah, this one's...
Uh, would that work for you, Mr. Flowers? Mayor? And we did the seven hundred and fifty dollar car allowance.
So the good kind of that, you're saying up to a thousand dollars towards baby coverage, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes. With your, with you being covered, your insurance would be paid in full, and then that would give you up to a thousand dollars for family coverage.
Um, you know, without going to the insurance market down there, uh, that's, that's a scary word, um...
You'd be incented to work on our employees' insurance policy.
Yeah, but, yeah, I would. I'm trying to think, what it costs me now here at home, uh, do they have any to do Cobra, Cobra until, you know, until that's, uh...
Which would give you eighteen...
Cobra, although never a key option.
No. But it would give you eighteen months.
But I think, Donna, he's saying, I think Cobra is like...
I, I think, I, I don't, I don't like that word, so I can't do that for him.
So you want us to include your family?
Uh, I guess I remember your question then, and I, and I can, and, uh...
So I would suggest then, uh, let's move on here, because we've spent a lot of time here. I saw two numbers for, uh, him and plus his family, uh, two numbers that included also his son. Uh, I saw thirty-seven, twenty-seven, and I saw thirty-two, fifty-two. I don't know what any of that, uh, really covers, um, so, we're just trying to do it. It's up to you guys.
And you, and Sheila? Again, I think we need, um, I mean, we need to think about what this does to our overall budget, and...
Well, I think as soon as we, we, you know, we're almost there, and we can say, what is it gonna do to our overall budget? He right now, he said, he, he doesn't like this, so I guess if he doesn't like this, he, he won't come? Is that what I'm hearing? Uh, Mr. Flowers?
Yeah, 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 because, you know, I gotta get the overall financial package for me to, uh, I hate to tell you that, but yeah, uh, yeah, that's, I put it overall, then...
So, so this is a deal breaker, basically, so if this doesn't happen, you're not here, correct? That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a decision to make now, we're at a decision point.
I, I make the motion that we cover Mr. Flowers' family coverage as part of his, as part of his compensation package.
Do we have a second?
I guess I'm gonna have the second, then, but I'm, I'm not sure what the details are.
Well, let's have some discussion, um, so you just did a blanket without, I mean, we've got two different policies.
Why does he have to decide the policy?
He has to decide his policy, um... Um, I'd like to know how much his Cobra would be, because it might be, um, for, at least for the first year, when he could do the Cobra for the family.
Well, just for the two of them, the family, it might, it's probably not gonna be more expensive than what they're, than what they're paying. Right, but you said that, I think Commissioner Burton asked him directly, and he said that there was, either we meet the request or he doesn't come, and my concerns are, um, Mr. Holmes has said he's not sure that this is the industry standard, Mr. Flowers says it is the emerging standard. Um, but, and as well, it adds considerably to our anticipated cost of what we've been paying for this budget line. Um, and again, um, I would want our finance director to assure us that we have the ability to pay that cost. And of course, that limits, that's, that limits what we, um, can do in other areas, and we just, we just created a assistant city manager position that I think is an additional twenty thousand.
Well, can I just add one more thing, too, if, if he's gonna be an employee, what are the social security and bank qualifications to the city? Uh, I'm, I'm not waiting in, if they were to again, that's not my problem. I'm just trying to make sure that we have all the costs backer in, so, uh, the hundred and ten thousand dollar salary, and some of them, some of them are all ended up, some of them are all ended up, uh, social security, what do I have to weigh in on, all that? And so you got a hundred and ten in salary, you've got, uh, nine thousand car allowance, you've got, uh... No, that's seven fifty a month, which you're pulling out, and finally look at your total cost, seven fifty a month in car allowance, which gives you nine thousand a year, the hundred and ten, uh, quarterly base salary. If I hear you correctly, you're talking about something in the neighborhood of, uh, thirty-seven hundred dollars, one hundred, we're rounding off, for insurance, which would be forty-four thousand four hundred a year. Um, was that, what are my busy there on compensation? One ten, nine, forty-four, four, what else?
FICA would be about a thousand dollars more a year.
What else?
But FICA and, that would all be another thousand dollars more a year, based on his salary.
So we're up to about one sixty-three, four, five, yes, three hundred. Um, and that's, unfortunately, you all have to have a backer in, your sick pay, your vacation pay, but that would be an improved obligation, fifty percent of that on retirement, I mean, on termination. Um, your membership dues, I don't know what that are, we're part of paying them, and then your ten percent for retirement, that's what I missed that one, so that's another eleven thousand. So you're about one seventy-four, four at that point. Uh, we is not, not counting, uh, your, um, not, not counting equipment, things like that, so, and the, so your total is a five contribution from the city, social security is five, that'll be a thousand a month?
Uh, no, I meant total annually.
A thousand annually.
Now, the...
Increased, because of the...
Increase.
An increase.
It'd be, it'd be eight percent of the salary, so what is that?
Eighty percent of the salary?
Eighty, 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 hundred, seven, zero, I mean, seven, six, five percent, so eight percent, so it'll be eighty, eighty-eight hundred dollars.
All right, so was that about eighty, twenty, two, two or something like that? So that's, that would be your, your total cost?
Yeah, so that's it.
Yeah, eight thousand four hundred, you know?
And she's coming up with the salary.
No, that's...
No, it's, well, we have to...
That's separate, it's re- it's an employer.
We have to match, as an employer, you have to match that.
Okay, that's the word.
You have to match that as an employer, um...
Okay, so, um, we have, we have a motion, and a second is, I guess, as part of discussion, we're having calculations.
We're having calculations, let me finish this, and let me just, let me finish this up for just a second, um... So, so really, if we, I think, Donna, what I'm looking at is, um, one twenty-eight. Melanie, can we, the heat, yes, thank you, um, maybe this was unhappy. So it's about forty-six thousand dollars, forty-six, which is pretty much where we have been all along, about forty-six thousand. Um, well, commissioners, this is, we have a, we have a proper motion, um, and a second, um...
I think if you please, if you come down here and figure out a better price on our insurance, or give us a better price than that office, that's a big part of it.
That would be, that would be exciting, because there's no guarantee, but only caveat there, I wouldn't count on that because we're a small group, and...
Your rural area, and your, your employees, your, you have more than fifty percent of your employees is over the age of fifty.
Yeah.
I don't know how much you're gonna be in the company to negotiate that.
Well, I'm not sure we speak, talking too much about that, but, um, anyway, um, so that's really where we are, and the, so the range, the recommended range for this position, I think the maximum was one thirty?
One ten.
No, so, when the salary study gave us a range.
Uh, we offered one thirty-four.
Right, we offered one ten, because how we...
One thirty-four.
Studies said one thirty-four, I think it's what it was, one thirty-four.
It was one forty for the city manager, obviously.
Okay, what was that, PJ?
The city manager, it's on the range, about to one forty, seventy to one forty.
Seventy-five, seventy-five to one forty, good.
Okay, um, are we taking public comment?
Uh, well, I mean, we can, right now, we have to figure this out amongst ourselves, too. Um, it's something we've gotta be going through, so Steve?
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, you know, y'all got the best decision for Crest City, I get, and I expect that, and I've been in government for a long time, and I find myself being fiscal responsible. I would tell you that everywhere I've been, I've found ways to save money for the city, uh, and I don't feel I'm gonna do any different here, uh, just, as we're saying, talking and researching, there's, there's other ways you can go as insurance agreement. Uh, and I think we can, and I think we will, uh, but so, and I'll make a party when I get there. But I'm not trying to twist your arm, I'm not trying to persuade you to do anything that y'all would feel comfortable doing. I, I, I get it, and, uh, and, but, especially know that I have been very successful as a police chief, getting, getting more done in the last, or finding ways to save money, uh, same thing I'm doing now, everywhere I'm at, and I'm bringing the same energy approach to that, so, uh, just put that in your thoughts, chief.
Thank you, and keep in mind, too, that if we, if we make this investment in you, um, you're gonna, you're gonna be working with the budget to make sure everything works. So Steve, um, your thoughts on this, so we're looking at about a forty-six thousand dollar a year?
Increase over, so, we can, I think we have some...
Okay, well, let's, let's, Steve, answer.
I was just thinking, like PJ's, I mean, we've gotten the fund balance, um, I, I feel a little more comfortable if the, if the year-end was done, I feel confident in Julian's calculation, she's pretty confident about it.
That number's been going on for several months now, so...
Yeah, so, I feel confident in that number, so, you know, I'm, I'm good, um...
Um, okay, I think with what we also have to keep in mind, we go back to, you know, we're gonna be in competition no matter where we are with other communities, and so, um, you know, we have to believe in ourselves, too, and it's expensive, so Sheila, you're shaking your head. It is a big difference, it is a big difference, but, you know, we're also, things are changing, too. Um, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and take public comments, because I do have a motion on the table, a proper motion on the table, so I'll take public comment, if you have, um, any comments, please come up, state your name and address if you would. So, a public comment? Okay, commissioners, do we have any further discussion on where we are currently? Okay, um, Melanie, I'm gonna ask you to do a roll call now.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know, it's just, I don't know.
What, what don't you know?
Just, I always feel more comfortable with it, knowing the fund balance, um, it just, it just seems like a lot of money.
Okay, so, so what's the bottom, what's all, what is the bottom line?
So this is where we are, so, um, let me go over this again. He's going to get seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for car allowance, unless, and I would like that caveat, I mean, somebody, I know, so that's when you come, as we have, yes, as we have a motion, um, unless we come up with a car. Um, he would get an initial twenty days annual leave, and then he would start accruing additional hours, um, on October first.
Yes.
He's gonna get a four thousand dollar moving, um, which, moving expense.
Yes.
His salary, we're looking at a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Is, we're looking at a twenty week severance pay, should we release him after six months of employment, um, for no cause? And...
Well, it's what we're not going.
And we're not going there, we haven't set apart, thankfully, and we're looking at compensating, but are paying for both he and his family, which is a wife and child, for their health benefits, um, annually.
And, and how much is that total cost?
So the total cost for that is in, in forty, about forty-six thousand dollars more than, than really what we have, um, been compensating in the past, um...
So a large part of it is insurance?
And a large part of that is twenty-nine thousand, that is insurance, it's, it's insurance. Um, I don't have a problem with, I mean, I feel like the compensation package is a compensation package, and sometimes the compensation package is worth more than salary, um, if we can afford it. So that's where we are. That's your agreement, too, Mr. Flowers, you can do all of that?
That cover everything?
Does that cover everything? Plus a ten percent, I can't hear him.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, so, I, 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 I think I heard you, though.
And you're, that's, that means your terms with a ten percent in, um, in investment into your retirement? Um, the only, the only other thing that we haven't talked about, which is in Charles Rudd's contract, is thirty-five miles, um, living, uh, but it does say within Hutton County, um, and so, uh, unless, unless there was a majority vote and you needed, um, something outside, outside of that. It's kind of like, um, it's in here, so, yeah, it was thirty-five, it's thirty-five miles, so... So before we go forward, is there... So, so before we go forward, is there anything else that you, that you need to add to this, Mr. Flowers?
So you said, you said, uh, thirty, you said thirty-five miles?
Manager shall reside within thirty-five miles from the city of Crescent City, within Hutton County, unless this requirement is waived by a majority of the city commission. I know that you're looking for a strong golf program. I understand that I've had a golfer, and, and that's important, especially when you're looking at scholarships.
Yeah, so, so I would, I would ask it, uh, Flag, Flag River would be, uh, okay?
Uh, that's, that's Flag River County, so that would be Flag River County.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure enough.
And if you went to.
Thirty, thirty, thirty-five miles would be, that's, that's, yeah.
I think you can move all this out.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Just check out Hutton County for.
You just have to remove the Hutton County, you have to remove the Hutton County.
So, so you'd be able to live in Flag River? Because thirty-five miles will reach all these, and obviously, you can only flag the beach, so that, that covers all Flag River County.
Well, why don't we just take the, the Hutton County?
Yeah, that's.
Thirty-five miles from the city of Crescent City.
That's what we said, man.
I mean, that, that's pretty simple.
And our high school, that's the, that's the, yeah. Um.
Is that, is that okay to Mr. Flowers?
Thirty-five miles, if you take the Hutton County out?
Yeah, if you count that, thirty-five mile radius, that, that's okay.
With the understanding that the manager agrees to be available to the city commission and all apartment heads on a twenty-four-seven basis.
Absolutely.
During storms, you know, fortunately, families, they're on their own. I, I, I've been there with publics, I've always been aligned with storms too. Um, so they can come here. Um. Yes.
So, just, um, using my smartphone, um, just for comparison purposes, I looked at the budget. I think this is Madison, yes, this is Madison, Florida. Their general fund revenues for twenty-two, twenty-three were four point two million. That's quite a bit greater than ours. Their total operating revenue for that year, including their enterprise funds, um, was eleven, eleven.
Eleven-nine, that's what they advertised too, it's eleven-nine for annual budget. That included their enterprise, they have four enterprises, I believe.
Cash flow or quick order.
Right, so I'm saying their budget is, yeah, that's, greater, is greater than ours.
That's true.
Just throwing that out.
So we have a motion, and what was in our motion that we currently have on the table, was it?
Was to cover this.
Was, okay, so that's a single, that's a single motion.
Yeah.
Um, do you want, do we want to go forward with that single motion? Or do you want to withdraw your motion and put everything into one motion?
I think, was it, Commissioner?
It was Jay.
Yeah. Commissioner, you made it, you said you did it.
So we can discuss, yeah.
Okay. So what, what's your pleasure?
I mean, I can change it, I can talk right now, or I can talk.
Throw it.
So, you, you, so I can make me.
So if, if somebody would, I'll entertain a new motion, please.
And was that a stretch?
And it needs to include all of the conditions for this. All the conditions that we have, that we have gone over.
Yeah, so did I, I just say all the conditions of. I, I would like to make a motion that we approved the employment agreements with Dwayne Flowers, um, specifying the, all, all of the points that the mayor just mentioned.
Okay, one thing, um.
One, would you, would you like for me to repeat that back to you?
That would be wonderful.
So you made a motion for the items that have been discussed, the seven hundred and fifty dollar a month car allowance in twenty days annually bank, with an accrual beginning on October first, um, of additional annually days, the four thousand dollar moving expense, a hundred and ten thousand dollar salary, the twenty week severance pay, should after six months of employment, after his, um, probationary period, we remove him without cause, the, um, and the additional payment for his, um, family or insurance, to be covered under insurance.
Yes, that was what I, that was what I referenced.
That's what you were, and using the Charles Rudd contract as the base contract for everything except, um, removing the provision of within Hutton County.
Okay.
Or rather.
And using the Charles Rudd contract for, as the base for the, removing Hutton County for the rest of the city requirement. Got all that?
One second. So we have a motion and a second. Um, Dawn, do you have all that?
I think I do, I, I, um.
I've got it.
There's notes that you were going along, and I think I've got, in all, uh, seven fifty car, twenty day vacation bank with twenty crew, four thousand building expense, hundred and thousand salary, twenty week severance pay, six month probation, petty insurance for he and his family, health insurance for he and his family, uh, ten percent contribution towards his retirement, and the requirement of location restrictions are put in all areas within Crescent, uh, Crescent City border.
Yeah, thirty-five miles, yeah.
Yes. Um, and should, and should we approve this, um, should we approve this, Mr. Flowers, do you have a start date?
Yes.
And that would be?
Uh, we, uh, I think it's, it's, the, the, March first.
Okay. He's gonna need to, so Dawn, if you'll make sure that you include that, that will probably be included in here. I believe it was, it was in charges also, so you, so we would do that, um, beginning on March first? We're adding that to the motion? Um, you, you can, I don't know that.
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't know that it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary.
That would be part of negotiations. Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you make this happen? If, if it's approved, can you make it happen?
You can make it happen, right?
Answer is yes.
He'll make it happen. Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned about, we'll, we'll try to make it work.
We'll make it happen.
I think the insurance, of course, is a big hiccup for us right now with you Flowers, and so, I don't know. There's what we can do, but we do need to find that. Um, and keep in mind, that's not a compensation, that's a, that's reimbursement. That would be our, our payment for, but it would be compensation. Okay, correct, correct. Okay, if, if there's any other discussion?
Yes.
Anybody?
I, I don't have anything on the second.
Okay.
Or ask.
I don't know. Melanie?
I'm just posting second. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mory?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Your minds?
Aye.
So approved? Congratulations, it's been painful and we apologize. Welcome to the sunshine of Florida. So in the sunshine, everything is public and everything is out in the open. Um, unfortunately, these negotiations, as painful as they can be, they have to be done, um, in the public eye. And so, I, I know that'll be, um, I, I feel, um, I'm, I'm excited about you, um, coming on board. I'm sure my fellow commissioners, otherwise they would not have voted in the affirmative, um, are also excited about you and, um, what you're gonna bring to Crescent City. So we welcome you with open arms, we hope you're accepting of this contract. I know Dawn's always been fine with the details with you. Um, and, anything else, commissioners?
Well, I just. Yes, Mr. Dean? Hopefully, we will not have to do this in future, but if we do, I think we need to be better prepared with all of our financial information. And, um, well, I think we just need to be better prepared, particularly with our financial information. Um, and I know that we talked about studying some dates that we left.
We will, um, I'm gonna go see if Michael is, is available.
Right, but I'm running short on time because I have to be out of here like this.
What day, thirty minutes? We're looking at, um, I think we're, I think we're, I think we're, we're good. Are you good, Mr. Flowers?
At least so.
Okay, we look forward to working with you, and we'll see you on March first.
Stay sharp.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And in the meantime, um, in the meantime, Michael has said, you know, if there's any time that you want to come down, by all means, um, just, you know, arrange that with Michael to let him know. And, um, you know, I know you're gonna probably be going through this on Friday, and we just hope that, that you still want to make Crescent City your home.
That's right, so we, we, we're going to, we're both going to come down in a couple weeks, so we'll stop in there this year. I'll, I'll call Michael to get with you.
Okay, that'll be great, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dawn.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome. So, Mayor, I, sorry, but, um, it's a good thing we have technical, technical abilities within our commission.
Yeah, and then I'm not responsible for any of that, because that's way outside of my, um.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Mayor, I, I have a request, I have a question, you all feel about it? Um, the Blue Ribbon Commission, um, is on tape.
I understand a lot of time on.
Well, I would, I would like to set that date. I know we have talked about some other workshops, and originally, I was told we, um, canceled the original Melford Park workshop until supposedly our new city manager would be here. Um, do we want to wait till Mr. Flowers is here to pull the other workshops?
Whatever the commission wants to do, it's a pleasure of the commission.
Well, I, I can speak to the BRC, they had discussed the twenty-seventh of February.
They're suggesting that as a date for us.
Suggesting, as a special meeting, yes.
Wait, uh, February?
February twenty-seventh, yes.
Okay, I am not here. Um, was there, was there a particular reason for the date?
Um, just because it would give us time after our regular meeting to, to be able to, uh, digest the information that they ever finished on the report that we're getting. So have you gone that whole week or?
I've gone the twenty-seventh, from the twenty-seventh of one.
So twenty-sixth, can we do it?
Or, I was gonna say twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixth is church night, usually.
Oh, that's right, yes, twenty-fifth, is that a little bit early?
How does that look with everybody scheduled? Commissioner Burton?
I have it scheduled. What day is it?
It's a, a Tuesday.
Twenty-seven, this, this month?
I mean, yeah, February, not February.
No, next month.
Next month.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay, Tuesday?
Yes.
At what time?
Um, probably the, both at six.
Six P M? I, I, I know this.
So go ahead and ask it.
Rover, if you do. Rover, eighteen, sixteen?
That's secondary.
I was gonna say, sorry.
City Commissioner comes first, I know what time Rover is out of habit.
Okay, um, so six, so we just wanna do it on the twenty-fifth at six P M?
And this is a workshop for?
It's, no, it's a special meeting.
Special meeting.
For the BRC to present their findings to you.
Well, I was thinking that somehow the findings would be presented a little earlier, but that.
Well, they will begin, yeah, you get the report very early, so you'll have it two weeks earlier, that's why you're spacing the time today.
Okay. Okay, so is everybody in agreement with the twenty-first, which, uh, twenty-fifth, which is a Tuesday at six P M for a special meeting for the BRC at this time?
I guess so.
Okay, we have an opportunity when we come into our regular session, um, in February, that if we need to adjust that date, we can, but right now, let's go ahead and try to get it on our calendars. Everyone's in agreement with that, and that's by, uh, about. Any other workshops we can hold off until, um, such time that Mr. Flowers comes on board and has an opportunity to, um.
Take a look at things.
To take a look at things, and get a, and make a big community. Is that good?
Sure.
And I'll be working. Okay, do we have any other, um, items? We have nothing else?
Oh, except, that vote was still there.
This vote, this stays still?
Uh, well, the last I saw, I looked at it, and it's going.
Um, I'll mention, I'll mention that to, I'll mention that to Michael and Captain.
Yeah, okay, and just to let you all know, if I could share, um, I did, uh, those Gomez took some photos and I sent those to Captain Esri, and he said he would keep me posted, but I hope he will keep us held posted.
Because I told, she said, I told her to get into registration numbers.
Right.
And that's what she said, what she said.
Uh, yes, and Captain Esri, the last thing he told me was that he was, apparently there's some other number he wanted, he said it was gonna go aboard low, or maybe he was gonna verify it, but anyway. Um, so that was maybe a week ago. Um, so hopefully he's doing something about that. Still there, meeting house, I told him.
Um, my understanding, one way, one second, just in case it comes across in the work for anybody, that we did have a, um, lift station go out on the, on Sunset Town, like State Law and the Commander will keep us working on that and figuring out what needs to happen, but they've got it under control. Okay, so.
With generators?
So now, this lift station, just, the, the, it hasn't been doing generating for a long time. So you just might be getting some comments from, from some residents. If it's that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to dismiss, thank you, Mayor.
I, I meant that being churned.
Second, can I, favorably say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sure didn't expect this eight-thirty meeting to go to eleven-thirty, but, okay, it's lunchtime. It's lunchtime. And let's just go with it.